Recording started.
Thank you, Peter. This is Ray Weldy, Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors, and welcome to the January 4th, 2021 work session. Work session's being held via teleconference as duly advertised, and the work session will get underway right now. I'll turn it over to Township Manager Joe Gatto. Joe?
Thank you, Board Chair. Well, basically typically what we've done in the past during our work session is kind of go through the various numerical numbers. It's one of three pages. Basically, the nominations for the reorganization, that aspect, the motions, the appointments, and then your subsidiary boards, and basically anything for the consent. And then, as well as the manager's report. It all depends on how you want to handle this, Board Chair. I think last year, we went through it line by line. And I would take it that you would want to proceed that way like the prior year.
That's fine with me. I think in other years, this is, I haven't been around that long, but in the other years, we went down one by one. And then, if someone wanted to handle a specific nomination, or appointment, or motion, then we just kind of jotted that down on the list, and that person then handled that specific item, if that's okay with the other members, the way we've done it in the past couple of years.
That is correct. That's how you handled it.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, number one then is the nomination and election of chairman. I don't know how everyone feels. I'm honored to be the chairman for this board, and I'm hoping I did a better job this past year than I did the year before. And if you'll have me back as chairman, I would, I would be honored to be the chairman again. But it's, like I said, it's up to the board.
I'll make that motion, right? It should be chair again.
Is anyone else interested?
We don't have that right now, though?
No, we're not voting. We're just saying.
We're just, Ed, do you want to handle number one then?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll nominate Ray for chairman of, for 2021.
Well, we'll do that in a public meeting, right?
Yeah, this is just a word section, Ed.
Oh, all right. Okay. Well, Ray wants to be chairman. Deb, co-chair?
I would be honored to be co-chair if you'll have me.
And Secretary Treasurer, I'll happy to do that again. I know I have to give, I know I have to give it up to 7:50, but I'm okay with that, too.
Hey, I'll, I'll make the nomination for number three for Ed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make the nomination for Deb for vice chair.
So Sue will handle that, and Ed will handle number one. Okay. Uh, number four, nomination and assist, election of Assistant Secretary Treasurer. Well, that's Ed, right?
No, it says the manager.
Manager in prior years. I would, I would like to be in that, in that position. I know we got Peter, and Peter's probably gonna, is, is, is that what Peter's doing, Joe?
The Assistant Secretary is the person that steps in when you're not available, Ed.
It's, it's been the township manager in the past.
I'll make that motion then, if it's okay. I'll bring it up and nominate Joe Gatto to be the Assistant Secretary Treasurer, if that's okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay, Ray, nominate Joe Gatto. Okay. Uh, motions, name the roadmasters. It's typically the four supervisors, other than the Secretary Treasurer. So, that would be a motion where we would, someone would make a motion to nominate Deb, Sue, Kim, and myself then, to be the four roadmasters.
So that should be it.
I can do that.
Okay, Deb, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, so Deb, you'll nominate everybody except Ed?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Number six, recommend to the Board of Auditors that they set the compensation for Secretary Treasurer at 7:50. But I think Ed, Ed, what did you say about that? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, I don't. Typically, I've been doing that for a while. And 7:50, I'd just give that back. I don't accept it.
So Frank, do we skip that motion then, or just mention that the Secretary Treasurer is electing not to take that fee?
Um, I don't know if it's, I doubt that it's required by the Second Class Township Code. I think we just skip it for now, or make the statement that, or Ed will make the statement that he's not interested in the fee.
Okay, I can do that. That's fine.
Okay. If it's okay, then I'll read number six. I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board of Auditors that they set the compensation for the Secretary Treasurer at $750. And then, Ed, if you're not interested in receiving that, you could chime in and say, I, if you're so inclined, I would, I'm declining that, that, that fee for 2021?
That's fine, sure.
Okay, okay. Um, the meeting dates for 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, I saw the list there, but Deb, did you have, you had mentioned something before about some meetings in late October, early November?
Yeah, I just had some suggestions. And I was looking at the calendar. If I'm not mistaken, Chris, you could probably chime in. From the time we do the preliminary budget to the time we adopt the final budget, we need 20 days to advertise. Now, with that being said, I was wondering, do we want to do three in a row, or do we want to change the dates? I'm getting my calendar up now, because when I was looking at this, I was looking at possibly, depending how the board feels, instead of doing October 13th, 27th, and then November 3rd, we do the 13th and the 27th as it's listed. And then, in November, instead of doing the 3rd and the 10th, could then that be three weeks in a row with the 13th, the 27th, and the 3rd, if we want to do?
Well, the three weeks in a row, Deb, would be the 27th, November 3rd, November 10th.
Right, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Thank you for clarifying. So do we want to do, um, let's see here, do you want to do November 3rd, and then the 17th, better than the 10th?
Can we, can we do that? Is there anything?
Because I don't, because if we do the preliminary, the preliminary, um,
Budget?
Budget. And then, if we finalize it on the 17th, okay, and for 20 days, because I looked in the past, on the 21st day is when we adopted it. So then, I was thinking we could do December 8th, that would be the 21st day, and not have December 1st. And then, if we need be, have a, have a meeting on the 15th, if we needed a separate one in December. That way, we're not having three in a row. It's just a suggestion.
Joe Gatto, was there a reason these dates were picked?
Got to ask Chris on that.
Chris?
Um, the meetings have always been in November and December, the first and second Wednesdays. And that has always been, as I was told, due to budget. There's a requirement that after we pass the preliminary budget, that we can't pass the final budget until it's been advertised and set out for public review for 20 days. So that's why they've always done the meeting the second week of November, so that we can get the final budget passed in early December, and then we don't have to have that second meeting. But we could have the meeting the 8th, and not have the 15th. You know what I'm saying? Because if we have it the 3rd and the 17th, and not the 10th, from the 17th, 21, on the 21st day would be December 8th. And then, we don't have to have three meetings in a row. And that might even give Joe a little bit extra time with the budget. Because I looked in the past, and we did the budget in 2019, the 13th of November, and the 4th of December. We, the preliminary was the 13th, and the 4th of December is when we adopted it. And in 20, which was the 21st day. And in 2020, we did the preliminary, November 12th, and we adopted it on the 2nd, which was still 20, the 21st day. I'm just saying, we don't have to have three meetings in a row. It's, I don't.
You could just add the other date that you want, and you can cancel meetings as you've done in the past. I mean, if that works, too.
Well, we could cancel the 15th if we don't have enough for the agenda. Like we all, like, it's been in the past, we never needed two meetings in December. So what I'm saying is, we have them normally how it's, how it is October the 13th and the 27th. Then, in November, we have it the 3rd and the 17th, or the 10th and the 17th, I'm sorry, the 10th and the 17th. Two weeks in a row. I'm trying to not have to have it three weeks in a row, we don't have to. And then, from the 17th, when we adopt the preliminary budget, the 21st day would be December 8th, and we have a meeting December 8th, instead of December 1st. And December 8th, the second one, the other month.
I don't have a problem with that. That's fine.
So Deb, the meeting?
It's correct. Is there any reason they can't do it that way?
No. As long as we have the preliminary out there for 20 days, we, we're fine.
Right.
And is there, is there a deadline that that budget has to be set by? Is it, what's it, December 31st, or is there some date in December it's got to be set by?
Has to be approved before the 30, or by the 31st.
Okay, so any day in December is good, then.
I, I think, I think what Chris had is fine, but all I'm saying is that I think it was more of a defensive posture, probably past administrations that, you know, even though we typically didn't have a December, two December meetings, we only had one. And if you do have a contested or a challenged budget in a given year, I think that you want to have the time, just in case if you need to add. I've been on other townships where they had it, add an additional December meeting. It gives you a little bit of flexibility having it early on. So I think that's the kind of premise why Chris has basically December 1st and December 8th kind of listed. It's more of a defensive posture, just in case. But I'm open to any, you know, however you guys want to lay it out, I'm fine.
Because we still have a defensive posture on the, on the 15th, the 8th and the 15th.
I, I've seen it in meetings where you still, you still had the two December meetings, and you still had to have a special session after. So, having been in the bigger cities, that does happen. So, but I'm, I'm fine with it.
Well, we would, we would set December 8th then, as a date to adopt the budget. But if the budget was challenged, for some reason, or questioned, then we could, we'd have December 15th as the backup, right?
That's what I was thinking.
That's what they're proposing, yeah.
That's what I'm proposing. That way, we don't have three in a row. And that might even give you, Joe, a little bit more time for the budget, because now we would be adopting the preliminary budget on the 17th.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
So what meeting, what meeting are we ditching? The, the 3rd or the 10th of November?
The 3rd.
Okay, so we would have a meeting October 27th, November 10th, November 17th, uh,
December 18th.
December 8th and December 15th.
Yep.
Right.
So would really be, two of these meetings would be taken off the charts for now, November 3rd and, and December 1st.
Right.
And we would add November 17th and December 15th.
Say that again?
We would add November 17th and December 15th.
Right.
Yes. Because that, and we still have that 21, that 20 days to advertise. And again, it may give Joe that extra time for the budget, if we wait to the 17th. That way, it also crowded in together. Just seeing this year was so boggled up together, I just thought.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, because that third meeting is the day after Election Day, and people are usually in kind of a stupor, you know, from the day before.
Right.
And then you have to come in the next night and have a meeting. You know, I mean, I don't have any problem with it. The rest of the board, I'm okay with it.
You're talking about the Irish?
I didn't say that. No.
And you're something. So that's my proposal, and whatever the board thinks. I just want it to work out a little better that way.
I guess we would, if we, if we then, for item number, the heck is it?
Seven.
What is it? Number seven? So number seven, we would have to, whoever, we would make an announcement then, that there's been a revision to the meeting dates, and we could announce the new meeting dates for November and December.
Why don't we let Debbie handle that one, then?
Yeah, Deb, it was your idea. Good idea. Okay. So Deb, you'll do number seven. So Deb, we're good on the dates then, right? The, the meetings will be November 10th, November 17th, December 8th, and December 15th. And everything else in this, in this list is the same?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
I think, I, we'll see. I, I just, like I said, I just thought it may be a better flow, and then give more time for the budget, for the preliminary budget to come to us.
That's, yeah, that's great.
Better. If the board agreed.
Number eight is naming the voting delegate for the PSATs Convention next year. I believe it's in April. And in the past years, it's been usually the chair and the township manager. We weren't able to do that 2020, because it was, it was canceled. But it's scheduled for April 20th or 21st of 2021. So if there's...
Is any, is anybody else going, by the way?
I plan on going. If they have it, I'll, I'll go.
Yeah. I plan on going also.
Good.
So, it says chairman or manager. I think the chairman.
Yeah, I thought. A lot of stuff there for all of us. I mean, if we can all go, that would be great, because there was an awful lot of stuff to learn.
Yeah, this is for the voting delegate, Ed. This is what, this is what we, um...
Voting delegate. We have a vote.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That are brought forth forward on that. I think it's that Wednesday, Tuesday morning? Wednesday morning, whatever date that is.
Right, yeah. Tuesday, I think.
Yeah. So, I mean, I plan on being there, if, if, you know, if you want, I would, I can handle the vote. I did it last, well, in 2019.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have a problem with the vote.
Hey, who's making the motion?
Uh...
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I don't want to nominate myself to be the delegate. Deb, you'll do that?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, thanks. Okay, appointments. Township Solicitor for 2021 is setting the compensation. I believe the only person, the person, I believe the only firm that's put in for the Township Solicitor is Begley, Carlin, and Mandio, namely Frank Dillon. At last year's rate, the retainer is what, $2,000 per month? And the discounted fee was, is it 125, whatever the fee is an hour? I didn't see any other proposals.
Yeah, I need any other proposals.
I'll, I'll make that motion for Frank's firm, if nobody else wants to go.
Okay, thanks, Kim. 10, Township Engineer for 2021 is setting compensation. I'll, sorry.
Why don't you do that one, Ray?
Okay. And I believe, and I spoke, we've, there's been numerous conversations and emails about this, and I spoke to Frank Dillon about this earlier this afternoon. And Frank said that any discussion that we would have about the Township Engineer and our, our thoughts on it right now, without voting, of course, okay, we would not need, not need an executive session. We would do it in the work session, which we're in right now. So if anyone would like to say anything, you're free to say it right now. We're permitted in the work session to talk about it.
What item we talking about?
Item number 10, the Township Engineer for 2021.
Oh, okay.
Primary engineer.
Yeah, that's been, some conversations been had about that, and some of it historically has been a problem. I personally think that the current people have been, have done a nice job, and they've been doing it for a long time. And the other thing is, their per hour fee is, is saving us some, some money based, based on the other contractors that are, the engineers have been talking about. So, and I've known these guys for a long time, and I would, yeah, I guess put them against any, anybody, but I'm not an engineer, so I'm not really sure what the other things and the other problems could be. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
Right, would there only be one firm, or would there be, I know there was some discussion about maybe having, like a backup firm, or some others, but that all fall under number 10?
Sue, that's a good question. And speaking with Mike, I tell you who...
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear it.
Sue, Sue asked if there would only be one engineering firm for 2021, or there be a possibility of being more than one firm, like a firm, and maybe a backup firm, or a firm that would handle overflow cases, or smaller cases, or things like that?
Well, you have, you have the primary, you have the primary engineer, you have a conflict engineer. And I, I believe Joe will correct me if I'm wrong, we have a separate engineer for the water and sewer, is that right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
So, so there's, but the Township Engineer gets the bulk of the work, the conflict engineer gets, you know, a little, but not very much. And then, the sewer is, you know, that's as problems arise.
Yeah, Frank, Frank, the, the issue, not the issue, but the question I have about that is, the Township Sewer Engineer has also put in a proposal to be the Township Primary Engineer. First of all, is that permissible? And is there any conflict in that? And second of all, is that seem like a workload that a firm that has put in for it, with the proposal, could handle that type of work?
See, I, I don't know CKS very well. One of my partners works with them in Shawfun, and had positive, has positive things to say. There, there's no doubt in my mind that any one of these firms could handle sewer and township. In sometime in the past, it was separated, for some reason, I can get what the issue was. I, oh, I think, I know what it, Tri, Tri-State was also the engineer for Upper South, and we, we hook up and connect at different places, involved in charges. I think that's why there was a separate sewer engineer.
Okay. And, and then I guess the other question, Frank, you're following up on what Sue asked. Are we only permitted to name one primary engineer? Is, is that it? Or is it possible to make some type of, I don't know, not an addendum, but to name an engineer to handle overflow, or smaller cases, or cases that the BCO deems appropriate, maybe that would, that, that wouldn't be of the magnitude that the primary engineer would handle?
Well, the, the Town, Second Class Township Code calls for the appointment of a Township Engineer, okay? And if the BCO determines there's a conflict, or it can be better to handle, that's why we have a conflict engineer. So I, I think you leave it to the discretion of the BCO, you know, to, to assign work as appropriate.
Okay. Mike Catalia, are you in on this?
He's on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you want to?
Michael?
What'd you say?
Michael, I, do you agree that there's a Township Engineer, and then we have conflict? And when you deem appropriate, you've referred stuff to the conflict engineer?
Yeah, basically. A lot of times, you, you ask the engineer, the primary, if there's any conflicts that they know of. So, that, that happens. But if you sense that there is a conflict coming up, you can, you know, kick, you can kick the work to the alternate. Pretty, pretty common.
So can we have two alternates?
I think so. I, I want to say, there's a couple towns up in the Lehigh Valley that have that. They have like specific projects, they have like a smaller firm work on, or, you know, those type of things.
That's what I was thinking. The smaller firm can maybe, obviously do smaller jobs.
Right. And some specialize in certain things. Like, one of your alternate engineer proposals was value engineering. She is really, really good about getting grant money. She's gotten Pendelboro a lot of money in grants.
And that's why I...
So would, would it be feasible, or viable then, to name two conflict engineers?
I think that's the way you should go on the conflict engineers. Have, have pull two, I would say, and then just have one for your regular Township Engineer.
Yeah, I agree.
That's my thought, yeah.
Okay. So that would be, that's under number 14 then, uh, which is value, and Remington Vernick have been, have gone to, have put in proposals for the conflict engineer.
As, as Gilmore did, I believe.
Gilmore put in to be the primary, not the conflict?
Not the conflict.
Okay. I thought they, they were covering both, sorry.
Not in my packet, I'm not sure.
Not in my packet.
Yeah. I think Gilmore put in to be the primary with CKS, Tri-State, and, uh,
You missed.
Remington Vernick, yeah.
Yeah, Remington Vernick put in for both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought Gilmore was putting both, I, so.
Okay. So getting back then, number 10, Ed and Sue had, is, is there anyone else, Kim or Deb, that wants to weigh in on the Township Engineer, or any questions about it?
No, but, so we're, we are going to recommend, or somebody may recommend Remington Vernick and value engineering as our two conflict engineers?
That's under number 14, yes.
Correct, okay.
But for number 10, naming our primary engineer, there's been some back and forth and some discussions and with the BCO and, and the Solicitor regarding that. And if we had any...
I thought you, Ray, were going to make that motion for, um, possibly CKS?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I just didn't know if, because Kim and Deb didn't have a chance to ask any questions yet, under that, before we moved on to number 11.
Ray, before you, before you move on the item 14, let me ask Mike if, if the intention of Gilmore and Associates was also to put in for the primary engineer role, as well as the conflict engineer. And maybe that was an error on our part when we put the book together. Let me, let me discuss with Mike. Mike, if you remember your, your conversations with him, or maybe your emails with him?
Yeah, yeah, it was, I, the intent was for both. And some of the times when we put proposals out, as engineering firms, we'll put it in for like, you know, the Cadillac version, but you know, you kind of get watered down. You know, it, it, they may, may not see you as the fit, as the primary, but they might put you in as the alternate, so.
Okay. And that, that would be my fault on that. I just wanted to make sure on that, Mike.
Right, that, that's their intent.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Deb.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, my only other comment is that for Tri-State, they're $103 an hour, and with the financial issues that we have going on, that's another comment, that's all. They're $103, and everybody else is 105 and up.
On the conflict, um, now we have three conflict engineers, but we're going to...
Select two, you would select two.
We want to select only two.
Yep.
Okay.
You, someone can make a motion for whatever they want, it's what motion passes. So, we're not voting here, we're just discussing.
I'm just trying to be clear on what we're looking at, because now we just added to the mix that Gilmore now is an alternative. I'm just trying to be clear on what we're looking at. Cause now we just added to the mix that Gilmore now is an alternative.
And would they both be voted on together at number 14 or separate? Each firm?
I think you should do it separate because people may have different feelings about different firms.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
So if there's no further on 10, the township engineer, then 11 would be the township traffic engineer for 2021 and setting compensation. And I believe there's the proposal from Joe Fiaco of safe highway engineering. And I don't believe there's any other.
I'll, I'll make that motion for Joe.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. So 11 is Kim. And it's safe highway. Number 12 is naming the township labor attorney for 2021. The only proposal I see for that when, the only proposal I see for that one is Genova Burns, who we currently have in place. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Sue, you'll handle the labor attorney? Thank you. Uh, the conflict attorney for 2021, number 13 is also our current conflict attorney, Patrick Armstrong from Grim Bean and Thatcher. Um, and I don't believe there's any other conflict attorney proposal there. So there doesn't seem to be much. Deb will handle that one. Thanks, Deb.
Um. Hold on. That was number 13, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And number 14, if you want, since I'm doing number 10 with the regular engineer, I can handle number 14 and, and, uh, make a motion for the three engineers separately to be the conflicts. I would make a motion first for Remington Vernick, make a motion second for safe and make a motion third for Gilmore and Associates. And then we would vote. Frank, if we're only picking two, what if all three passed?
I've never had three conflict engineers before. I mean, there's only been one. I mean, you could appoint many conflict engineers as you want and, you know, you might have three and you, there won't, there won't be much work for all three of them. But maybe they're appropriate to handle a particular job as Mike indicated.
Mike, how do you feel about three conflict engineers?
Well, Ray, uh, that would be a lot. Uh, you and I might be competition for hair or lack thereof.
Kim's in there too. Don't leave him out.
Yeah, we all go to the same barber. Uh, so, uh, that's a lot to balance. I would recommend two, a larger firm, a smaller firm. And kind of go from there. Three's a lot.
Yeah, let's narrow it down for Mike.
Who would you recommend, Mike?
Um, I, I personally, I, I like Gilmore. I like their speed. They are a little pricey, you know, Ed leads to that. Um, but you know, the quality of works there, they're local. Um, they, um, they, they've done some really good projects. Um, Remington Vernick is also a good firm. Um, I, I work with them in other municipalities. So I work with all these engineers all over the place and typically no issues. Um, like Gilmore is one of my favorites because, you know, I like their efficiency and their quality of work. And then for the small firm, I would recommend value engineering for that. Um, she's, she's really good and, you know, could help us out grant wise and, and some other, you know, some other incentives there.
Well, that's three.
No, I just give you, I, I would, it would be Gilmore would be my number one pick for the alternate. Right? So as your larger alternate.
Conflict, yes.
Right. It's your conflict. Sorry. Um, and then value would be where I would go for the, um, the, the smaller conflict firm.
Because their pricing is exactly the same Remington and Gilmore's.
They're comparable firms. Right. I just, yeah, I'm pleased with Gilmore's turnaround time. I, I like the quality of their work.
So the two conflict engineers that, coming from your angle would be to recommend Gilmore and value?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
No problem. And all.
What would be the primary?
He's got a, somebody, Ray's going to make a motion and it's either going to pass or fail. And then if it fails, you go to the next person. So we're not, we can't, we're not making all the selections right now.
We only have about, uh, another 15 minutes before we're going to jump into the other session. So.
Okay. Number.
Up the pace.
Number 15 is, uh, the third party inspector for 2021. I believe we have, uh, BIU in for that. Right?
Mike?
Um, so BIU also did put in, um, and also our firm Barry Isaac and Associates put in for that.
Okay.
At a different rate schedule than what BIU, BIU is hourly. Our, our firm was looking for, um, uh, it was a percentage base permit fee, which lowers the township's liability when it comes to the cost.
And who would, who would do those inspections then for, for Isaac's?
Uh, so that I have, uh, several master code professionals on staff, um, including electrical engineers, um, and inspectors. So I have Rick Halbaum. Uh, he's the guy that comes in the office where suspenders all the time. Um, I got Brandon. Uh, I got a guy named Dave Backenstoes. He does very large stuff. He's been doing some inspections in town. Um, so what would end up happening is all the electrical would then come in house. If you were to choose our firm versus now it's getting farmed out. Uh, and actually residents are getting built separately. Uh, we're, we're getting built separately from BIU or Middle Atlantic or whatever firm that they were using for that. So it would be a one stop shop kind of deal.
And, and the percentage, Mike, how, how would that compare? The percentage fee for the inspections compared to the $50 for the residential and a hundred dollars for the commercial? Is, is there a, a correlate or a comparison there that we could kind of wrap our heads around?
The township would actually see a net increase in revenue because they would be getting 40% of the permit fees right off the top with no additional liability. So that, uh, the plan review fee is like a pass through. So there's no, um, there's no like markup or anything on that. Uh, that's like one for one. What you would see, let's say if you have, um, you know, a hundred dollar permit out there, the township's already getting $40 of that. Uh, the inspection firm would get 60. Now the inspection firm has to go out there two, three times. It's still 60 bucks. Like you're not paying for those additional failed inspections and whatnot. That, that's all incorporated into that fee structure. So monthly you would just be paying out a percentage and you would actually have the gross receipts and you would know where you're at monthly. Uh, once the permanent fees are paid, then you're like, oh, okay. So we, we build this much month, uh, in January. This is how much money we've, you know, anticipate revenue from those, the permanent fees. So what we did when we did the fees, the, the fee schedule, if you remember a couple of months back, we adjusted those permits to, uh, compensate for either direction you went. But the township is actually losing money on, on, on numerous permits because of that.
How about for the residents, uh, especially the, the residential permits? Is that, you know, would there be a negative impact on them financially?
No, actually they're going to see if, if the, uh, previously if the residents had to pull an electrical permit, they actually were being billed on the side and we were not aware of that originally until a couple of residents came to me and said, hey, listen, why am I getting an invoice? I already paid my permit fees. And I was like, what are you talking about? And then they showed me. Um, and, uh, the, we were having some problems with that. So we, we did have a meeting with BIU to try to, uh, navigate that. But when we adopted the new fee schedule, we basically told them they weren't allowed to charge for any more electric permits on the side that the township was, um, taking that on.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Does anyone want to handle number 15 then? And?
I just, I, I have a question for either Peter or Kim or Joe Gouda. Guys, does everything that Mike Catalia says, does it all jive? I mean, is it really gonna, is it going to save the township money?
Well, the, the one thing I would say is that if it's kind of a, a one-shot deal with, with Barry Isaac, if they're doing the inspection component, um, you're going to get away from if a, if a, let's say if a contractor fails, um, you know, you're going to have that other payment again. Uh, this way I think it's a more balanced approach and there's more opportunity for the township to make revenue, uh, under, under these circumstances. The only thing I would say, uh, Mike would not be reviewing any of this work and it would not be any of his product. Uh, because I don't want it to be a conflict of interest type situation, but it would be a separate independent component of the Barry Isaac family that would be doing that book of business.
Correct. And if there was a conflict, we would then engage with BIU on an hourly fee. Just to bring them in. We did reach out to some other inspection firms and we didn't get any proposals before today.
There's not that many in the area. I mean, there might be one more and that's going, probably going into Lehigh. And I'm not sure if they would even entertain an offer to come down in this area.
So I would recommend BIU as being like a conflict. Uh, one where I can send work to them if for some reason there's a conflict or somebody is appealing saying, hey, listen, you know, I don't, don't really care for the way you guys are doing this. You know, we would want somebody else. Um, and that's typical in some of the towns. We, we don't really inspect our own work in places, but there's, there's been, if you guys have gone to PSATs and you've, you ever hear about the legislation where they talk about retaining three BCOs? So just imagine that, dealing with that, trying to manage three BCOs in one municipality.
So, so Frank, would it be, would it be in line then to, should we, should we go that route? For someone to make a motion to appoint, if, if that, if this happens, for someone to make a motion to appoint Barry Isaac and Associates as our third party inspector for 2021? And BIU as our conflict third party inspector? Should a conflict arise with Barry Isaac, since they also handle our zoning?
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay.
So we'd have a separate motion for the conflict, the BIU?
Yes.
Okay. So number 16 then, if we go that route with Barry Isaac, we'd need two separate motions?
Yes.
Anyone up for that? Or do you want to dump that on me?
I'll take one of them if you want.
Who was that?
Ed.
Ed? Okay. Ed, do you want to do the, the motion for the, the primary, uh, third party inspector?
Uh, I can do, yeah. Who, who, who was that? That's number 15, right?
Uh, yes.
That would be Barry Isaac and Associates.
And then we would need a second motion to appoint BIU as the conflict third party inspector. If a conflict arises with Barry Isaac being both our third party inspector and our zoning.
And, and going back to Kim's question, if we don't see that Kim coming, let's say six months go by and if we don't see that revenue opportunity present itself again, then we may have to revisit the circumstance again.
Okay.
We should see it.
Ed, are you okay handling both of those motions? Or do you want me to do, to do the conflict motion?
Yeah, why don't you do the second one?
Okay. So you'll do the motion for the primary and a motion for the conflict third party inspectors, right?
Third party inspectors would be, um, Byron, what's her name?
Barry Isaac and Associates?
Barry Isaac?
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to do the second one, I'll do that one. Okay?
And then after, yes. And then after Ed does that, I would make the second motion to name BIU the conflict third party inspector. Should a conflict arise with Barry Isaac being our BCO and our third party inspector?
And Mike, you will continue, you will make the billing separate and distinct?
It, it'll be the same. You'll actually, um.
But I mean, separate invoices, uh, not enough, everything is segregated and separated.
It, it would be like it is now, but it'll be much more clear because it won't be hourly based on the UCC side. You'll, the board will actually get a spreadsheet before, um, um, in their packets showing, uh, the revenue. And I, I can send a sample of what that would look like going forward.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Number 16 is a third party zoning officer for 2021. The only proposal we have for that is for Barry Isaac and Associates, who's our, our zoning, third party zoning officer right now. So, uh, would anyone like to make that motion?
We got about six minutes.
So we're, we're talking about number 16?
Yes.
And that's, uh, Barry Isaac.
Right.
I agree that.
Okay. Thanks, Deb.
And there's no rate change for that. Just, just, I wasn't sure if you're aware of that.
Yeah. Number, number six. Number 17 is a naming of the newspaper or record. It's either the Advance or the Bucks County Courier Times. We've had the Courier Times for however long. Um, there's been a suggestion to make the Advance. And I understand that, uh, there was a little research done on the Advance and, uh, the, the coverage, you know, the, the, I guess the subscriptions and the coverage and the publications are a little bit different than what we're used to with the courier. The courier publishes six days a week and reaches, uh, probably, I would say into the tens of thousands of, of circulation. And we found that the Advance publishes once a week on Thursdays and has a circulation of about 3,000. Um, I, I don't know if anyone wants to handle that. Um, I, I understand that there was a, there is a possible cost, there is a cost savings of going with the Advance. I just don't know what, how many people in lower Southampton read the Advance or get the Advance? And is it worth us changing newspapers to, uh, you know, to go to the Advance? I don't know where we, we get the Advance.
But it's only one week and I don't know if that's going to work for us.
You, you, it, I just, I'll clarify. I, I sent it to Chris. So the Advance is the Bucks County Local News. If you, if you ever go on that website or the Bucks County Herald, the ones that you pick up for free in the stores and whatnot, that's the Advance. It, it's a historical name, but it's, it's really the Herald. And it's published countywide and they use the website buckslocalnews.com or something like that. Uh, Newtown Borough and a bunch of other ones, uh, use that, uh, publication. That's where, that's where I got the information from.
And it's cheap.
But don't they only publish once? I looked it up and it said it only published on Thursdays, once a week.
In print, yes.
Those, is that what we need to advertise though? Is that, would that be adequate?
It, it wouldn't work for emergency meetings or.
Right.
It, it would, it would work for standards, you know, run of the mill stuff, but it's not going to work for emergency. We use it in the law office because it's cheaper.
But in an emergency.
It's a, it's, it becomes a trade-off dollar wise. If we're going to spend for the courier, let's say we'd spend $6,000 in a given year to the courier. Under these circumstances with this other vendor, it, it would probably be one third of the cost. So in a challenge year, we kind of would bring this forward a, as a potential vendor to bring in, uh, to save a few dollars. Uh, but also meet the letter of the law as far as that, you know, advertising.
So do you feel confident that we'd be able to advertise adequately with the Advance?
Thank you.
It's, it seems like in any given year, we have a couple of emergency meetings. You know, whether it's for like this past year, we had a COVID, a, a meeting where we had a session to discuss personnel layoffs and things. The previous year, we had a, a, an emergency meeting in July to discuss an internal investigation. Yeah, I, I, I don't, you know, there always seems to be one or two emergency meetings here.
Hoping to stay out of the newspaper, uh, Ray. So hopefully we don't have, we, we won't have any emergency type settings.
I hear you.
But if we do, I, I understand what you're saying. It's just the trade-off. There's, you know, whatever vendor you want to select as a board. I'm, I'm okay doing, it was just another option to put out there.
So if there's an emergency, would, 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 how would we advertise?
Couldn't you just use the carrier? I mean, there's nothing.
That's what Newtown does. When there's an emergency meeting, they publish in the courier. They just pull out a regular ad.
Oh, okay. I get, no, that's what I was getting.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I guess if Frank uses it, you know.
In that instance.
Beggarly Carlin and Mandio uses it, I guess we could try it for a year.
Do we have to, do we have to state that when we make the motion that for any emergencies we'd use something else or we don't have to do that?
Well, I, I think you make the motion, they'll, you know, appoint the advance. And, and also make a motion, authorize the, the township, uh, staff to use the Courier Times when necessary and appropriate.
You know, I'll, I'll handle 17 then. That's exactly how I'll put it.
Thanks, Kim. Number 18 is the Bank of Deposit. If you, uh, if you're okay with that. Um, Sue, do you want to, do you want to do that one? We just read the bank of, all those banks of deposit into the record. We make a motion to appoint those as our banks of deposit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next page is the Township Representatives for the Police Pension Fund. Um, in the past year, the Township Representative's been the Township Manager. So if everyone's okay with that and doesn't desire any changes, um. I can make the motion to appoint, to name Joe Galdo as the Township Representative for the Pension Fund.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, number 20 is the Naming of the Vacancy Board Chairman. Uh, I don't.
I don't see all the letters of interest. I don't.
I didn't see anything.
No. And the Vacancy Board Chairman for the past, uh, I don't know, two, three years has been John Nairns. I don't know if he's ever even been used, but.
He hasn't, no. I'll do that if you want.
Wait a minute. Is he even interested? We don't have a letter of interest. Uh, anybody doubt to him?
Well, I think, I think he's interested, but, uh, you know, if not, he can always back out.
Yeah, but you can't appoint somebody who didn't send a letter of interest though. You can't just go by hearsay.
Do they, do they know they have to send a letter? I don't know if the, if.
I don't know.
The township.
Well. Right. You have to appoint somebody. So my suggestion is you appoint somebody if they say they're not interested. We appoint someone else the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Was he contacted?
I don't know.
I'm not aware on that one.
I'm sure he'd want to do it. If, if not, he probably would have told us.
Yeah. Well, I think he wants to do it, but he hasn't said that specifically. You know what I mean?
My question was, was he contacted and nobody knows? Okay.
Right.
Next up is, uh, item number 21, Name of the Representative to Swibswak. Um, and we usually have the Township Manager and I believe Deb, you're.
I'm still interested, even though it's been like, nothing has been happening since COVID, but.
Okay, so Joe, Joe Galdo and Deb, anyone like to make that motion? If not, I'll do it.
I can make it.
I don't mind. Go ahead.
Oh, Kim, you got it?
Yeah, for, uh, for Mrs. Kaplan and Mr. Galdo.
Galdo, right. That's number 21. Thank you. Number 22, Naming of the Rep to the Tax Collection Management Committee. Is a supervisor and the finance director. Uh, I'm not quite sure. Is any one of us on that now?
I am.
Oh, okay. Ed, would you like to remain in that capacity?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And it would be Ed and what, Peter, Kim?
Peter.
That's fine.
Okay. If it's okay, I'll make that one then.
Okay.
All right.
And Peter, Kim. Great. Number 23, Appointment of the Open Records and Right to Know Officer. Right now that's Joe Galdo. Joe, do you desire to remain in that position?
Uh, not really, but I, I, I do it for the township.
I'll, I'll make that.
There's nobody else that wants to. I do it.
The right to knows have, have slowed down the retreat.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Uh, number 20.
Can I ask one really quick question? I pulled up my list from last year and I saw that we, that we appointed a court reporter last year, but I don't see it on for this year.
We did it, we did, uh, that was specifically requested by Jeff at the time. Uh, we ran it by Mike this year and Mike didn't see the need to do it for that, for this particular year. But it was more of a Jeff issue that he, he would like to see it on there.
Okay, thank you.
Next up then would be the number 24, um, which would be the Appointment of the Fire Marshal per the Township Code. I spoke to the Solicitor about that and Frank suggested that someone make a motion to, um, appoint. The interim or the acting fire marshal, Ryan Smith, um, in that capacity for another year. Um, and would remain in that position throughout that year unless or until we name a, appoint a fire marshal.
So the motion is to appoint an acting fire marshal.
Right.
Because I know the board hasn't finished their interviews and the board members, some board members have expressed. The desire to complete the interview process before, uh, appointing a, a permanent fire marshal. Or appointing a fire marshal that's not acting.
Okay.
Ray, I'll, uh, I'll make that motion then.
Thank you. So Kim's got 24. Okay. Next up is our subsidiary board appointments. I'm going to go through these pretty quick. Uh, 25 Animal Advisory Board, there's two appointments, um, open, but no one has submitted, uh, for reappointment. So there's four vacancies. So we don't really have to do anything with number 25, correct?
Right.
There's nobody to appoint. Number 26 is Disabled Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Um, again, three appointments for three-year terms. No, no one has submitted, shown any interest for reappointment. There's four vacancies. So I guess that's a. Non-issue, not, non, uh, motion item, uh, appointment. Number 27 is the EAC Environmental Advisory Council. One appointment for a three-year term. There's only one, uh, applicant and that's Mr. Dean Bryson. He's already on the Advisory Council and he's asking for reappointment. Um, if that's okay, I guess, looks like it's coming around to my turn. I'll make that motion to, to reappoint Dean. Number 28 is the Industrial Development Authority. Um, Keith Wesley is up for reappointment. He sent a letter in, uh, earlier this, I forget the exact date of it, but it was sometime in, I think. Sometime in the fall, asking to be reappointed for another five-year term. If anyone like, anyone would like to handle that.
I'll do that if you want.
Okay. And just to let the board know, I texted John Nairns. I don't know if a text serves as any official notification, but he is interested in staying on as the vacancy chair. Uh, number 29 is the Library Board, three appointments for, uh, each one for a three-year term. These are all reappointment requests. Christopher Dunham is asking for reappointment. Carol Murqueur is asking for reappointment and Dr. Gary Bowman is asking for reappointment. If anyone would like to make them. Okay, Deb will handle those, the motion for those three appointments. Number 30 is the Planning Commission. Um, there's two openings, uh, for. Four-year terms. Uh, Kyle McMullin is asking for a reappointment. Um, earlier in a previous meeting, David Rising stepped down and as of this date, we don't have, uh, any, no one has shown any interest in that. So that, that one would remain, I guess vacant for now. So someone would need to make.
I'll do, I'll do Kyle.
Okay.
Um, well, he wants to be stay, to stay on the board, right?
Yes. Two appointments for five-year terms. Uh, Tony Crox isn't seeking reappointment. He said in his letter, he's, he's looking maybe to move and so. So forth when his wife's employment thing changes. So Charlie Bloom is seeking to be appointed to replace Tony. And Bob Sterner is asking to be reappointed.
I'll do that, right?
Okay. Sue Cummings will do that. Thanks, Sue. Next up is number 32, the VAC. There's two separate appointments in there. If you guys are okay, um, I, I wouldn't mind doing both of these. The first one is Tom Hitchcliff is asking for reappointment for a three-year term. He's currently on the board. And the second one is Joe Neen has stepped down as the board's, uh, treasurer. And Jim McGory, who's been a long time volunteer with the board, is asking to be appointed as a board member. And take over Joe Neen's term as a treasurer. So if the board's okay, I'd like to make both of those.
Sure. That's fine. And what a, what a, what a terrific person too Jimmy Gory is.
A great guy and he's going through a lot and he's at these meetings. He handles the Facebook posts every day. He does a heck of a job.
Yeah.
Um, number 30, 34, the Zoning Hearing Board, Sam Pizzolo. There's one appointment. Sam Pizzolo is asking to be reappointed to a five-year term. If anyone.
I'll make that for Sam.
Okay, Kim's doing that. Um, then we have public comments and the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is pretty much the accounts payable, which we've all gone over. I haven't seen anything in the accounts payable indicating any payments to our labor council for the Ottinger litigation. Um, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I didn't see anything in December 10th and December 22nd. And the resolutions are for the RDA grant monies and also, um, a cup, the police pension plan advisory committees. The non-uniform and the deferred compensation for the plan advisory committee, appointments of people to those committees and the RDA grants. And I'm hoping, if I haven't glossed over anything, that covers it all?
I think that's it, other than the map report, but that, that's fine.
Well, yeah. Do you have anything, Joe, that we should know about for that?
Um, well, just, uh, real quick, three things, uh, the Township Cleanup Day, Matt will do a discussion on that. Uh, the IRS intermileage rate, there was a change. And if the board's willing for tonight to get a jump start on this, uh, request an approval for the, uh, budgeted salary, salary increases. If they wanted to do that for tonight.
Do we know what, what, what the recommendations are?
Well, that day would be for, uh, the, the police chief, the lieutenant, um. The admin assistant, the public, uh, public works director, uh, Pete, uh, Matt, um. And the, and the HR component. Uh, I, I believe that's all we have. And then there is two other individuals that is. That are part of the, uh, the, the Teamsters, Teamsters organization that are going, kind of going above and beyond. That I, I would like to put forward for tonight.
I mean.
And that could be postponed if not, it's, it's your call, what you, what you guys want to do. I just figured we usually do the retro and we have to go back and it's a payroll issue. Uh, but it's your call if you want to do it tonight or it can wait.
I just don't know.
Or it's all part of the budget.
I don't know if the board has any questions as far as percentages and monetary increases.
We really don't want to go into that because then it becomes an executive session type issue.
Well, I mean, I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's full in line basically with the collective bargaining agreement. So, uh, the collective bargaining agreement for the police officer was 3.5% this year. For the Teamsters, for the public works guys, it's a dollar. For the clerical, it's 85 cents. And the raises accordingly, for the most part for the directors and so forth, all fall in line with that. Um, except for more the, the Pete and as well as Mark, they unfortunately, when they were hired. Uh, we had the COVID issue pop up and last year being a challenge year, um, and they did, uh, uh, basically on the civilian. We get a management give back. Um, so there was 20, almost $25,000 given back by the, by the administration here. Um, they had no opportunity typically after their six-month review. They're given, uh, in the past practice, anywhere from a three to $5,000 type of increase in, in a given year. Uh, Mark nor Peter had that opportunity in the whole year to receive the view for that. Nor did, did it affect the, the circumstances we had.
Joe, I don't have any, any, any quarrel with any of that and I don't know if any of the board members do. I would just. I would feel more comfortable, maybe if the board got a, a spreadsheet or, or some type of. Document where we saw what the directors were making, what the percentage is and what the proposed raise is. Instead of kind of like quote rubber stamping something that we, we don't know the numbers, especially in the fiscal situation we're in.
That's not a problem. We can do it for the 27. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. And I have to backtrack a little bit, um, because if we're changing the dates of the meetings, we have the budget workshops. So obviously the budget workshops won't be November 3rd and 10th. It'll be the 10th and the 17th.
Okay. You want to bring that up, Deb, when you make your?
I'll bring that up. I just wanted to.
Okay.
Move that, that would have to change as well.
Okay, good.
List the dates of the workshops. Can I make the motion?
Okay. Um, does anyone else have anything or do you want to segue right into the regular meeting?
Don't we have to change?
You'll have to jump out and get back in.
Yeah.
We all go to back out and then resign back in under the second email from Peter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. See you in a minute.
See you soon.